I'd like to call the Monday, December 5th, 2016 City Council into order. Please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Here.
Alderman Glab?
Here.
Alderman Curry?
Here.
Alderman Peterson?
Here.
Alderman Condon?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The City of McHenry's mission statement is as follows. The City of McHenry is dedicated to providing its citizens, businesses, and visitors with the highest quality of programs and services in a customer-oriented, efficient, and fiscally responsible manner. First item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing for consideration of the City of McHenry 2016 Tax Levy Ordinance in the amount of $4,761,635, representing no increase above the 2015 Tax Levy Extension. Derek?
Thank you, Mayor. The purpose of this agenda item is to conduct the 2016 Property Tax Levy Public Hearing and to provide City Council with the information needed for the adoption of the 2016 Property Tax Levy Ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, I'll open up the public hearing and ask if any council members have any comments or input at this time. Alderman Curry?
Yes, I just wanted to comment that in some of the discussions we've had previously, just for the public that's here, I had brought up the possibility of an actual tax reduction rather than a flat levy. And I would like to see us actually do that, if that's my opinion. We, I think we could look easily at a 3 percent reduction. We tend to, we conservatively estimate our revenues every year, and we also conservatively estimate our expenditures, which is, which basically what that causes is that we end up with more revenue or more net funds, if you will, than what we count on. And most years, that's to the tune of about a million dollars or more. So I would be proposing tonight that we discuss and we hope that we could look at an actual reduction of 3 percent, which by my math comes out about $143,000. Thank you.
Alderman Condon?
Just that I'm really pleased that, for the sixth year in a row, that we can even maintain a flat rate. While I think if our state wasn't in the financial crisis that it is, I would agree with Alderman Curry, but I'm always on the conservative side because I'm always concerned that we're not going to get the funds that are due to us from the state. So it would concern me to lower the tax at this point.
Thank you.
Because I, we still need to operate.
Thank you. Other comments from the council? Alderman Glab?
Yeah, I kind of agree with Alderman Curry as far as the fact that I think $140,000 on, Derek, what are we at, $42 million? We're budgeting $42 to $46?
Well, that's including the utility fund.
Okay, without the utility fund.
So it's about a $20 million, $21 million general fund budget.
When you start looking at the overall picture, it's even much, much smaller than we're asking as far as a reduction. What we're talking about is a reduction as far as the part that it's the taxpayers, as far as their property tax. And it's not that great of an amount of dollars in the realm of everything, but it does kind of show an example to other taxing bodies as far as the fact of just being as fiscally responsible as we possibly can. I mean, we have had reserves set on aside if we have problems as far as getting money back from the state. And that's what those reserves are there for. I mean, we don't just leave them there because it's recommended to have reserves. Reserves are there in case of things happening where we need to dip in and have extra money. And then, let's say if the state, for some reason, lags behind and then we need extra money, we have reserves for that reason. We don't take those reserves and put it in the bank just so that we're banking it instead of our taxpayers. And I just feel that that 3 percent, like I said, I think, you know, whether the percentage be 2 percent, 3 percent, or whatever, but if it's a reduction in dollar amount and a savings for property taxes, and I'm not going to say it's a big reduction per person, but it's a start. And I know there's other taxing bodies, some others, that are looking at a slight reduction also. So let's get in with it and let's be one of the leaders and not the followers on that. That's all I have.
Other comments by the council? Alderman Condon?
I think in this day and age, especially in Illinois, because of taxes being so high, unfortunately, the city's tax portion is one of the smaller amounts. And if, I think we have been a leader, actually, with the sixth, as the sixth year of maintaining a flat levy. If the point is to make a reduction to show that we are trying to be cautious, which I think we have been, and I think that's why we have been able to maintain a flat rate for six years, then even a 1 percent, I could, I could, I could support. And while I agree with Alderman Glab that the reason why we have that reserve fund is, funds, one of the reasons is because of the possibility if the state doesn't forward us the money that's due to us, but also for an actual disasters or what have you, any type of an emergency. But if we, in Illinois, unfortunately, we can't be guaranteed how long something like that could be on, that could go on with the state not funding. So I just, again, trying to be conservative because unlike a business, we have to be able to continually maintain our roads and continually provide police and continually provide all the services to our community. And I want to be able to continue to do that. We've been very careful in cutting not only staff but other expenses within the city. And I think we have been an example and a leader in cutting by not hiring, rehiring positions and consolidating positions. So if we want to make a reduction, I guess I could support 1 percent, but I wouldn't want to go anything higher than that.
Other comments from the council? Alderman Santee?
No, when I first read the minutes from the Finance Committee, it was discussed at that level, and I was pleased to see that because it does, it does show us that we have kept a flat levy, but with us actually, you know, possibly going to a certain percentage of reduction, you know, it does put us out there just to say, and it's definitely, when you look at the whole picture, it's a small amount of money, but it does create a, an attention to say that, you know, we are upfront and we would like to, to keep the taxing to, you know, as little as possible on the constituents in the city. And I was pleased to see it there. I was, you know, slightly disappointed that really it didn't get discussed at the prior meetings as much as I thought it should have been. And I'm definitely willing to look at it tonight. That's all I have.
Staff, have any comments?
Yeah, just a quick comment. While I'm certainly supportive of reducing taxes and the taxes on residents, I would be remiss from a city administrator and an advisor of the council's standpoint if I didn't point out a couple of things. First of all, that this council did make a decision last year in terms of unbudgeted revenues or excess revenues, if you want to call them that, to divert those or assign those for future uses, capital, for capital projects. So anything above our minimum, minimum established fund balance or the minimum number established for a general fund, fund balance for emergency, the plan moving forward established by council was to identify those surplus revenues, and that's the unbudgeted revenues over expenditures to be dedicated towards capital projects. And the next part of that comment is to remind council that our five-year capital improvement program, while it's just a wish list in terms of assigning dollar amounts, there are a lot of projects in there that need to be taken care of that are a priorities, not the least of which is about a $45 million local street program, that again, those surplus or unbudgeted revenues over expenditures would go to fund in future years based on the change in the fund balance policy. And the final thing that I'll say is, as it relates to operating revenues, our costs, you know, while we are very conservative, as Alderman Curry mentioned, on not only our revenue projections but also our expenditure projections when it comes to putting together our departmental budgets and the operating budget for the city, and in terms of, you know, adding staff that aren't needed or things that aren't needed, we just don't do those sorts of things. Yet, yet we have to realize that our costs don't go down from an operating standpoint. The cost of supplies and services and personnel costs continue to go up over time, whether it's through our collective bargaining agreements or the benefits that we provide to our non-bargaining unit employees. So the caution from a city administrator advising standpoint is that our operating costs continue to go up from year to year and that we have $100 million in a five-year capital improvement program that general fund surplus, any general fund surplus would be dedicated to provide. And just the last thing is to remind council that we spent over $4 million on a capital program this year, which included about 2.4 million transfer from that, from that general fund surplus for capital projects. And we had, there's only about $1.2 million left in that amount, amount from last year based on that, and that our audit came back and showed that our unbudgeted revenues over expenditures for the last fiscal year was about $500,000, $600,000, and not over the million dollars. Thank you.
Any other comments from staff? You know, I would just like to, oh, I'm sorry. I would just like to respond, I guess, Alderman Santee, to your statement that you weren't given an opportunity to discuss it. It was on our agenda, the motion stood as presented to bring this forward in its current form, and the majority voted yes, including you, I believe. So I think you were given an opportunity to discuss it. You certainly can change your mind and discuss it further, but I take exception that you didn't get an opportunity to discuss it. Alderman Condon?
I wanted to further make a comment about something Mr. Morfield had talked about. While it is true that some other governmental entities have reduced their budgets, they had surpluses. And we, we have our reserve, but we don't have excess surplus. And as he had mentioned, our expenses go up every year, cost of living, operation, cost of operation in general. And we've been able for at least the past five years to be able to maintain, but by maintaining a flat rate, we've actually, that is, should be considered a reduction as we still have to maintain operations at a higher rate. So, I'm sorry, I'm getting the looks from Alderman Glab, but if we're maintaining a flat levy and our costs are going up, it is like a reduction, not from what the taxpayers are paying, but in what we have to spend to continue our operations. And so I do think that was a point well taken, that we do need to continually to remember that just as anyone has to budget, we have to make sure that our employees are paid, that our, we have the sources to cover the roads for the salt, like we just had to last night, and all the other opportunities, our police force, our capital improvements, the roads, et cetera, et cetera. So just wanted to make that clear.
Further comments, Alderman Curry?
Just a couple of comments. While it's true that we, and I appreciate staff's cooperation in creating that new policy about moving the funds from the, from the unassigned general fund balance to the capital fund, and I think that was, that was a good change. That was, that was a good change that we did because now it assigns it to something rather than just having what was going to be about $10 and a half million of unbudgeted or unassigned. So we, you know, we now have the fund that's there that was $6.7 million or something like that for the four months operating expenses, and then the rest of it transfers. But we're also very conservative about that. I think the 1.2 million that you mentioned possibly will end up being higher than that when we get the final numbers in. The $600,000 last year rather than a million was, if I'm not mistaken, part of the reason for the fact that it was, I think it was $630,000, but part of the reason for that was, we made, did we not make an early payment on the, one of the tax refunds in that year so that it actually depressed that number? And it's good. I mean, we made it early so we don't have to make it later, so that's fine. But in fact, it matters the current revenue streams that we have and the expenditure outflows still year after year are around that million to million and a half dollar number. So we're looking at, you know, what I mentioned was 3 percent on the property tax levy, that's seven tenths of 1 percent in our general fund budget, $143,000. And just one other, I just, it's not a huge expense to the city. And one other thing I'm going to mention when we talk about, you know, property tax reduction and some of the, some of the things that we always put out there, which is, you know, if we, we always compare to a $200,000 home, that the effect of a flat levy will reduce the percent of the city's portion on a $200,000 home. And that is true. That is technically true. However, that person who owns that $200,000 home this year doesn't have a $200,000 home anymore because we all got, or any of you were in the McHenry Township, you got your tax valuation notice that was 78 percent higher. So the effect of a flat levy on the homeowner in real dollars as far as what they're paying for the city portion is actually going to go up. Even, even if you decrease it by 3 percent, as I proposed, they're still going to see a 4 or 5 percent increase in the city's portion that they're paying. And the homeowner, I think, really just cares about how many dollars are going out the door, not the percentage. And their dollars are going to be higher on our portion. And I know we don't control a big part of it, and that's, you know, that's schools and some of the others that have the huge percentages. But again, as Alderman Glab mentioned, it's, it's putting it out there for others to maybe look at and follow. And, you know, there's been, and we have been one of them, taxing bodies that have kept it flat for years, and that's a great thing. But I guess this would be the next level. We're not the first. There's some others that have announced some tax, that anticipate tax decreases. So we're not the first. And this is actually a relatively small amount. And, you know, we're always, we always talk about the fact that we're not a home, that we're a home rule so that we're not under PTEL. Well, and I would say too, that if the $143,000 that I'm talking about creates a hardship at all, which I can't imagine, because we are a home rule, it's a one-year deal. We can recover that if we really had to. So there's no emergency thing here that the city is going to not have enough funds. But I really think the taxpayer is really only going to look at that line item if they're looking at the city, and they want to know if it went up or down. That's really what they're interested in. So I would just like to send a signal to them that, you know, we're willing to try to make it go down as much as we can. Thank you.
Further comments by the council? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council in the public hearing? Step forward.
My name is Craig Wilcox. I actually hadn't attended on speaking, but I wanted to comment on a couple of the comments. I heard the term unbudgeted revenues or surplus revenues. Tim Dwyer, who is suing a number of taxing bodies, would call that excess taxes. So Derek, I know we got to also be careful of the risk that we put the municipality in if we fall into calling them unbudgeted revenues and not taking a look at possibly reducing them. So that's one challenge. The other comment that I've made publicly to both considerations of valley high reserve funds and at the school boards is let's not burden our taxpayers on the what ifs if the state or the federal government fail. In other words, we don't need to be taxing to the max now in case Medicaid or Medicare or in case the state steals state education dollars for CPS. We'll wait and address those issues when they occur. And I don't think what our residents want to hear is that McHenry City or McHenry Township or McHenry County are fine and prepared with covering for state failures on the backs of the property owners here. So I don't think we want to use that as any of the reasons. So I do commend your consideration of this, and you have mentioned that others have done it. McHenry Township did actually vote on their levy. It's a 10 percent reduction in the general fund and a 10.8 percent reduction of their highway fund. And we just had our new county board chairman sworn in today, and he reiterated in his remarks the commitment to reducing the county portion 10 percent. So I commend you for looking to stay as a leader, and you certainly have been, and I hope that you'll take that on this year and reduce that levy as a leader. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to comment? Seeing no one, any further comments by anyone? Alderman Glab?
Yeah, I just want to state that when government starts taxing and that money goes into the bank and isn't spent that year, and granted, you still have to have some reserve funds, but when that happens, you're taking money out of circulation, and that actually works against what this country was all about as far as capitalism. Economy grows, the economy moves, when the private sector moves money around and spends money. And when the government has it, and I'm not just saying the City of McHenry, I'm not blaming just the city, but when government holds on to your money, it stymies the economy. And again, I still back what Alderman Curry is suggesting, and I'd like to see it happen. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any further comments? Looking for a motion to close the public hearing? Alderman Glab?
So.
Is there a second? Alderman Curry?
Aye.
Any discussion on closing the public hearing? Please call the roll. Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a motion to pass an ordinance for the levy of taxes for the year 2016 through real estate taxes in the amount of $4,761,635. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Alderman Peterson? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second?
Chair, other motions.
Entertain another motion. Alderman Curry?
I would like to move that for consideration of a 2016 property tax levy ordinance in the amount, if I've done the math right, not to exceed $4,600,000.
No, no, you should do it in exact amount.
Pardon?
This is the levy, so you should do it in exact amount.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
No, I will start over. I'm sorry. I would like to move for consideration of the 2016 property tax levy ordinance in an amount not to exceed $4,618,786. That's right. That's right.
It can't say.
You can't say not to exceed.
Right, we're levying an exact amount.
Exact dollar amount.
Oh, I was looking at what was in front of us for the other levy. Excuse me. I'll repeat it.
It doesn't say that. We understand.
It does. I will move for consideration of a 2016 property tax levy ordinance in the amount of
Thank you. Is there a second? Alderman Glab?
Sure.
Further discussion, Alderman Curry?
I have no more comments.
Alderman Peterson?
No question.
Alderman Condon?
Just clarification, I'm assuming that's 3 percent, Alderman Curry?
Yes.
And just a clarification one more time, that was $4,600,786.
Correct.
Thank you.
Alderman Santee?
I'm comfortable with 3 percent.
Alderman Glab?
I'm comfortable with that dollar.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll. Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson?
No.
Motion carried. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the public comments section. Anyone wishing to address the council? No one has signed in this evening for that purpose. Is there anyone here for that purpose tonight? Seeing no one, move on to the consent agenda, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Alderman Condon, some of, is there a second? Alderman Glab?
I'll say.
Thank you. Discussion, Alderman Condon?
No questions.
Alderman Santee?
Number three, so that, if I could, I'm sorry, see explanation in regards to, that's work that's going to be done, some of that's going to be done downstairs, but then actually it's the walkway on the backside also.
There's two separate areas that we're looking at and making some improvements to the building in. One would be the lobby when you walk into the, the first one would be the lobby when you walk into the police entrance, right behind that bulletproof glass right there where the records division is at. When we move everybody out, we'll have new carpeting and paint in there. Those are the two primary areas. And then upstairs on the catwalk, so when you walk up the stairs or come off the elevator, obviously the elevator and the stair, and that area right now has been beaten up a little bit with construction and is long overdue for carpeting anyways. So those are the two primary areas that we're talking about.
And it wasn't, it wasn't looked at in regards to designing that or looking at that as a potential, something that would need to be done when first reviewed the whole floor plan?
We had stayed so tight on what the actual dispatch center and the police admin, that we didn't expand it at that time. We knew that we weren't We knew that we weren't going to physically change those areas at all, and so we were moving any walls, and there was, well, there wasn't consideration at that point beyond. All right, maybe this is a prime opportunity. Once we start moving all those files out and we have public works guys and the Dumb Network of other guys that are out moving these packed files.
Sure.
It becomes apparent that this is the time to do it.
I mean, that's one of the things that, I mean, I was thinking about, because when some of that stuff that's been sitting there for so long gets finally gets moved, that yeah, you're going to see something there. Maybe it wasn't noticed before prior, because, you know, when you look at the floor plan, it's not visible right near, you know, when you're reviewing everything. Thank you.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah, I've got that.
Alderman Curry?
Yes, I would, I would like to pull item A for separate consideration.
I'm sorry?
I would like to pull item A for separate consideration.
It would take an amendment on the motion. Is that acceptable to you?
I'll move to amend the motion to.
I'm sorry?
I'll move to amend the motion to pull item A for separate consideration.
Is there a second to that? Alderman Glad?
I'll second.
Please vote on that amendment. Call the roll.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The remaining motion is without item A.
Correct, correct. So I had just a couple of things on the items that are left. You know, I appreciate the chief's time today. I had a couple of discussions with him on the truancy ordinance and, you know, just, I guess I'll make a comment just to be clear, because I was, would you like to make a comment?
Truancy is B.
Yes, I understand.
Okay.
On item B, right, I had, you know, my question revolved around, when I first read it, as we discussed it, it appeared that, you know, we might be jumping a little quick on some of this, but as the chief clarified, this really doesn't kick in for our officers at the school until the student has run the course of, what is it, nine absences?
Nine unexcused absences, some mediation from the school, and two attendance contracts. So once they go through all of that, and then, and then it's a truancy ordinance by us.
Yeah, so I just wanted to bring that up just in case anybody else might have the same thoughts. So, and I appreciate your time and appreciate the clarifications, I think that was good. The only other question I had is on the item D. Is this something that we could do ourselves? I mean, we have some pretty talented people, including yourself, Mr. Hobson, in parks and recreation area as far as education experience. Isn't this something that we could tackle ourselves?
This is not something that's typically done in-house. You really want to strive for that statistically valid surveys that come back and tell us what an independent expert is going to tell us. This is the same process we went through back in 2005. It seemed to work very well for us then. I think by, especially by doing the community needs assessment and going outside to a firm to take a look at that, I think where our cost savings is going to come in at is really going to be in the master plan. So when we go to update that, I think that, that survey in hand, the new, will be 2016, 2017 survey in hand, updating the 2005 survey, really leads us to believe where our, where our community says we're at and where they think we should go. The other part of this is looking not just at parks, but at programming. That's something that wasn't taken under consideration in 2005 of what type of things are they asking us for? We have this gorgeous building that's extremely successful right now. We want to continue to ensure that it stays that way and that we're out front and not, and sometimes when you're in that circle, at least my opinion is when you're in that circle, it's hard to look outside when you have an independent firm that's coming in outside and saying, here are some trends industry-wide that might have data from across the state or across the nation. We have, we all have local contacts that we've fostered and established, but I would hope that a firm would be able to come in and really give us a, an assessment of what we are doing well, where our community thinks we need to go, and an outside opinion.
And how do they, I mean, 30, what is it, $30,000, $40,000, right? How do they, how do they get at the opinion? I mean, what are the methods that they use? What's the, just real quickly, I mean.
It's primarily going to be a survey, and how we accomplish that survey is what we'll have to. It'll be, we want to be as accessible as we can, so that could be mailed out, it could be an email survey, it could be a telephone survey, there's a number of ways that we can accomplish this. Back in 2005, we did it, it was primarily a mailed out survey at that point.
So did we mail, we mailed to all residents then? Is that what we did?
Yes, yes.
And what was our percentage of?
In 2005? I don't remember what it was at that point.
I'm just curious. Okay. All right, thank you.
Alderman Peterson?
No questions.
Any further questions or comments on items B through G? Seeing none, please call the roll.
I can't remember who made the motion. Or, I'm sorry, Alderman Condon? Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, back to item A, an ordinance updating and amending municipal code, chapter 14, article 4, drug paraphernalia, possession of cannabis, section 14 through 75 pursuant to the recent amendment of the Illinois Public Act 99-00697. Looking for a motion on this item? Alderman Santee?
I will make that motion.
Is there a second? Alderman Condon? Discussion on item A, Alderman Santee?
Well, you know, when you read it and you go into it and follow up what the state did, you know, and help me out, chief, if I'm, you know, I'm not probably correct it, but we have to abide by this.
We do. We don't have a choice on this. We have to abide by this. And all they've done is they've said, because of making 10 grams of marijuana or less a civil offense, they've also said that correlation of having paraphernalia with cannabis has to be a civil offense also. It's kind of confusing, because if you have just the paraphernalia without the cannabis, it can be a misdemeanor charge. But if you have the paraphernalia in possession with 10 or less grams, both the marijuana and the paraphernalia has to be a civil offense, and they have maximum fines that are attributed to a civil offense.
So, but if it's a civil offense, does that mean it's something that, like, we're in charge of taking care of that? I mean, we?
We issue, there's a, there's a specific citation that's issued for that. It's, it's hard correlation, but we have no tolerance for DUI charges for kids under that. That's a, that's a per se civil offense also. This one, it's not criminal, they decriminalize it, so we have a special citation will issue for the possession of cannabis, 10 grams or less. And because of that correlation with paraphernalia, it has to stay the same.
And that's a local citation, which we do, and then we'll do the process.
We send it to our adjudication court.
That goes into our funds, correct? You know?
Yeah, we send it to our local adjudication court.
Okay, that's, I want to make sure that, thank you very much.
Alderman Glad?
Yeah, I guess the question actually isn't why we have to, but what happens if we don't? Put some ramifications if we don't.
That's the question. We are dictated by these ordinances and these state laws, how we charge people. And if we don't abide by this and we leave a ordinance that is in violation of a state law, you're asking me to have my officers charge someone with a criminal offense that the state has deemed is not criminal, and you're leaving yourself up to litigation on that. I would, I would tell you that's something we really don't want to get to that point. I think we have our legal advisors here also to stand by that. You know, we all have our opinion on possession of marijuana and gateway drugs, other drugs, understand that, but the state has deemed this as a civil offense. We can't supersede that.
There you go. Okay, that pretty much explains the whole thing right there. Thank you, chief.
Alderman Curry?
Thank you. Yeah, I asked for this to be split up, because I just wanted to, I guess, get in the record for myself. I'm one of those that doesn't agree with what the state has done. I think that, and actually, I agree with the federal government on this, and I did a little, a little looking, you know, the National Institutes of Health and the Institute on Drug Abuse. And basically, what ends up happening when we do things like this as a state or municipality is we send mixed messages, particularly to teenagers with the legalization, decriminalization of marijuana. And there's, there's lots of, in fact, the scientific evidence is growing that if use begins with the teen years, that actually IQ is lowered by six to eight points is what they're, where they're at right now, and interferes with other functions and well-being. And at the same time we have this going on, a number of teens who think that use is harmful is actually declining. And why is that? Because we're sending those messages to them, so. And then when you talk about addiction of marijuana, and I know there's a debate out there, but again, looking at the information from the National Institutes of Health, addiction in teens is twice as high, they're twice as more, twice as likely as other users to become addicted. And, and of course, it is linked to higher uses of cocaine in particular for people who start particularly as teenagers. And of course, again, it's linked to lower grades, school failures, poor quality of life. So I really, I understand the legal ramifications and, you know, between us and the state, we're between a rock and a hard place, but I struggle voting yes on something that I so much disagree with, so that's my comment.
Thank you. Alderman Peterson?
A question for the chief. Chief, when it was a criminal offense, does that stay on the record of the juvenile?
Yeah, criminal offense on the juvenile?
Or is it, I mean, a certain age group?
The adult stays on their.
It's a criminal offense. Does that make them tough to get a job or, and they have a criminal background?
It can't, it can't.
Yep. So an employer might look at that and say, well, I'm not going to give you the job because you smoked pot, or you got caught with a reefer, and now you're a criminal. But now, now it's not going to be a criminal.
It's a civil crime, you know, and again, I think all of us here probably have differences of opinions on the severity of marijuana use and possession, but all I can tell you is we cannot enforce a law different than the state has dictated we can enforce it. So for this case, we cannot arrest someone for drug paraphernalia, make it a criminal charge, or make it anything but a civil offense if they have that paraphernalia with cannabis. The state has ruled we have to do this. Not we may, we must do this.
But before this ruling, it was criminal, which is more serious.
Yes, but I will tell you also, the autonomy is given to your officers too for small amounts of marijuana and paraphernalia for a first-time offender to send it to adjudication court, but you'd not make that criminal, make it a local ordinance violation, which doesn't go on your criminal record. So, so, you know, you have, you have that first-time offender and the officers handling that case feel that an adjudication citation even prior to this, they had that autonomy to do that with small amounts of marijuana and paraphernalia, to see if they could handle it. Because, you know, we all say putting them through the court systems is the best way to do that, but sometimes sending them to adjudication court where the respondent and not a defendant, it doesn't go on their criminal record, but we as officers can keep an eye on that person better than I feel sometimes the court systems can, and we can, and we list them as respondents. But we get them again for that same offense, we've given them some leeway, we've given them some way of getting out of having that on the record, then we are less apt to make them a respondent, we would make them a defendant. We've had that prior to this. What this says, when you have marijuana and paraphernalia, it must be a civil offense. So this, we don't have that leeway. This is a must.
I was just wondering what the state legislature were thinking about doing this, you know, just trying to reason or not to reason. Maybe you guys do know that are not charged criminally, and it's better for their job prospects or scholarship prospects or anything like that, you know? So thank you.
Any further discussion on this item?
I haven't spoken yet. Pardon me? I haven't spoken yet.
Oh, I thought it was your motion.
No, I'm sorry. It's not yours. That's okay. I just wanted to point out that I agree with Alderman Curry. As a mental health professional, although not a drug and alcohol counselor, I see many clients who deal with depression and have used, and I'll always recommend that there are other legalized medications that they should be pursuing. And I would, you know, I feel like it's a can of worms that the state is open, and yet I also believe a lot of people that are using, have addictions and need mental health professionals to get them on the right track. So I, you know, I, it's a sad situation all around. I am very supportive of the police and using their best judgment, but I always will defer to the police as far as following the law of the land.
Further comments on?
Yeah, just a further click. So we, you know, biggest concern I have are, as I mentioned, were teenagers, young people. You know, somebody who's my age, at that point now, we're not going to change what they're going to do, but, so if a teenager is apprehended with drug paraphernalia and marijuana or whatever, more than likely, you would, you would delay, you would send them through adjudication if you could?
That or a juvenile goes through a juvenile court system also, you know, what's called offensive report, offensive report. They wouldn't go through the criminal procedure in Woodstock, but they have a juvenile court system.
So in either case, they're, they're pretty much treated differently anyway.
They're treated differently, but it's not a bad thing either sometimes. Sometimes there's more, you're more apt to be able to obtain counseling in some more direction with juveniles. I honestly think we're given a lot more freedom when we deal with juveniles, no matter what the incident is. You know, the courts give us, and with the courts too, with probation and counseling, there's, there's more, in my opinion, more avenues for that, for a juvenile offender.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further comments? Please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a motion to approve ordinances for the abatement of real estate taxes for the following bond issues. General obligation bonds, recovery zone, and build America Series 2010B for $427,157. General obligation bonds, alternate series 2010C for $444,187.50. General obligation bonds, alternate series 2012 for $208,432.50. General obligation bonds, refunding series 2013 for $584,560. And general obligation bonds, refunding series 2015 for $580,978.76. Derek? Carolyn?
The city of McHenry has issued a variety of bonds backed by the full faith and credit of the municipality. This requires a property tax to be levied by the county clerk. The city's intentions are to abate these taxes through the county court annually through the attached abatement ordinances.
Thank you, looking for a motion on this item? Alderman Glad?
I'll make the motion to pre-ordinance for the abatement of the real estate, of real estate taxes for public issues and general obligation bonds as stated.
Thank you. Is there a second? Alderman Curry?
Second.
Discussion, Alderman Glad?
Just want to say that it's been the city's policy for quite a few years here that, that we've abated these general obligation bonds, and if we didn't, we would probably be right in the ballpark with some of the bigger governmental entities that tax us. So we save the taxpayers a lot of money when we do abate these real estate taxes.
Thank you. Alderman Curry?
I agree with what Alderman Glad had, nothing further.
Thank you. Alderman Peterson?
No questions.
Alderman Condon?
No questions.
Alderman Santee?
I have no questions.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Peterson?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next item is a motion to approve the annual financial report for the city of McHenry Police Pension Fund for fiscal year ending April 30th, 2016, in accordance with the requirements set forth in 40ILCS 5/3-143. Carolyn?
The Illinois Department of Insurance requires that the city council approve an annual report for the police pension fund. This report lists important information that can also be found in the actuarial report.
Thank you, looking for a motion on this item? Alderman Curry?
I move to accept a report.
Thank you, is there a second, Alderman Santee?
I will second the motion.
Discussion, Alderman Curry?
Just one quick question. The, the unfunded liability changes, it goes, it actually rose a little bit, but that's mainly because of interest change, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah, so I think the interest went from seven and a half to seven percent or something like that?
Correct. They dropped it down because of, we're not meeting the seven and a half, so they dropped it to seven.
Yeah, so when the economy comes roaring back and interest rates goes up, then this will look a lot better. Thank you.
Alderman Peterson?
No questions.
Alderman Condon?
No questions.
Alderman Santee?
I have no questions.
Alderman Glad?
No questions.
Please call the roll.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Condon?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.